Well, we're going to start with the announcement. Norwood Media Center is recording tonight's message. If anybody else is recording, please just make that known to us. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is to the left. Pledge of Allegiance.
District wide, United States of America, and to a republic where which stands, one nation, under God, in this world, where there is justice for all.
All right, so the first item on the agenda we have, agenda item, I think I'd get it right after a year, is the reorganization of the school committee. So I'll be turning over the meeting to Dr. Vaydah.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Norton School Committee, with the election that just took place, which was a reelection of Mr. Stavas and Mr. Shidi back onto the school committee, and the chairman now turning over the election process to my office, I will act as what's called the Chair Pro Tem, meaning just for this purpose of receiving nominations for conducting the election of the chairman of the Norton School Committee. At this time, I would ask for nominations from the members of the board. Mrs. Stavas?
I would nominate Sherry Cohen as chair.
Ms. Cohen, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Is there a second of Ms. Cohen's nomination as chair?
Second.
Mr. Shidi, a second. Are there any other nominations for chair? Here we're not, I need a nomination to close the nominations. Motion to close the nominations. So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of Ms. Cohen as the chair?
Aye. I'll close the nomination.
Oh, I'm sorry. Close the nomination first, sorry.
Aye.
Any other ayes? Thank you. Now, on that motion to cast one vote?
Pro Tem casts one vote.
Okay.
That's how it works, right? We don't vote.
Sure.
Your pro tem.
Right. So I'm the pro tem, so I turn it over. Congratulations, Ms. Cohen. Welcome aboard.
This is going to be fun. So bear with me, everybody. I can't believe we actually have a packed house for my first night ever.
It's a setup.
It is a setup. All right, so you're going to kind of have to walk me through something, because we have to do...
So now you'll open nominations.
Open nominations for vice chair. Any nominations, Dinesh?
I would nominate Kathleen Stern for vice chair.
Any...a second?
Second.
Okay. And...oh, do you accept Kathleen? Yes, okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye. I'll close nominations.
Close nomination, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now voted. Now you vote for the actual vice chairman. You just closed the nomination, now you vote.
Okay. It's going to be a long meeting, guys. I'm sorry. All right. All those in favor of Kathleen being vice chair?
Aye.
Okay, that was great. That was...
That was a good job, Sherry.
Now we have all the different...
So, Madam Chair, we have the first person would be the appointment of one member of your committee to be the legislative representative to our elected legislative group at the State House, including Mr. Barrows, who happens to be getting Mr. Howard and Mr. Feeny.
Nobody wants to deal with those guys.
So you need a nomination for one member and a second, and then you can vote.
Okay, so any nominations for the legislative representative?
Mr. Shidi, I believe, is the current member.
Current.
Did you want to do that again? Second?
I'd nominate Mr. Shidi.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You need two members for the representative employee negotiations that is currently involves the Teachers Association and the Powers Association.
If it's okay with others, I would suggest that Carolyn might continue to do it, because we are actually in the middle of a negotiation right now.
That's great. So a nomination for Carolyn, Dinesh? All those in favor? Aye.
Okay. Madam Chair, the capital improvement committee, per charter, has a member of the school committee. You currently are the capital improvement committee representative.
I don't mind continuing that if somebody else wants to nominate, right?
Nominate Sherry Cohen to capital improvements.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, we have a sped pack representative as well.
Nomination?
That's usually...
Nominate Kathleen, second?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, a difficult one. Each of you act as a liaison to a building. So you attend parent board meetings as often as you can, give them updates, and collect information as needed. So currently, the NHS, the HHS, the JCS, and the LGN meet on Wednesdays, and the middle school is on Thursdays.
Okay, so let's start with the high school. Anyone interested in that? I've done it, but if somebody else wants to, I mean, now that they have a president. If somebody wants it, they can have it. If not, I'll keep it. Anybody else interested?
Wednesdays are not good days.
Oh, right, okay.
Ever.
Okay.
So I can't.
Somebody nominate Kathleen, then, to continue as a high school rep?
Oh, sure. So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And you should default to be the middle school one, correct? Because that's Thursdays.
Sherry, I don't know how you feel about that.
Yeah, that's fine. Sorry. That's all right. Unless you would rather do the high school, since you'll have a high score. I don't know. It doesn't matter. So can we take that vote back?
Motion to reconsider the high school.
Yeah.
Second? All those in favor? Aye.
I would nominate Barrows, Sherry Cohen, high school.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the Yale School?
Jonathan Mead.
Someone nominate Dan?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. JCS?
I'm doing it now. I like doing it.
Okay.
I don't have my dog in the fight there anymore, but it's good.
Okay.
For voting stuff.
Anyone nominate?
Nominate Dinesh, JCS representative.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And LG?
Okay, so it's me. Yeah, I guess it would be.
No, it would be...yes, yes, yes.
Nominate Kathleen Stern, LGM rep.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And middle school? So I nominate Carolyn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good. Right, so we're going to move on to the minutes of the April 23 meeting. Everybody have a chance to look them over?
Yes.
Any questions, comments? No? All right, motion to accept the minutes from April 23?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What next is warrants information. I reviewed approved warrants that were presented to me at the April 23 school committee meeting. The total amount approved was $312,541.77. I wish to enter this information into the public record. And then we'll move right to the student updates.
Hello. Hi, guys. So EP exams began today, and they're wrapping up next Friday. Also, this Thursday is a district-wide wear purple day to benefit a student district that has sick plexuses. Also, on this Friday, at Cross Pavilion by Gillette Stadium, PAC held their annual Arrive Alive Week last week to raise awareness about the dangers of drinking and driving. Science Honor Society went to the JCS and taught lessons on biology to the students there. Also, the Spanish Honor Society held its annual Dia del Churro, where Spanish students can answer Spanish questions or receive a churro.
On April 29, about 10 to 15 students in high school went to Deiner Hobitai School for the best buddies of all, which is a good time. Then some upcoming dates for the senior class. Spirit Week starts next Monday, six days long, which is going to be following. And then that week after is also the senior finals. And class night is May 29. Canoe B, which is our class trip in the day, is May 31, and then graduation is June 1.
Great, thank you. Guys, have any comments or questions for them?
Let's ask every person. Last day, first meeting.
Yeah, the last day is May 21, and then finals follow that.
Yeah, we need to reconsider the minutes. I know there was something in our wants to...motion to reconsider the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Transportation options, we reviewed, we can't vote on that, since we voted on it. Good catch. Motion to approve with the strike of the word vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. That's what happens when you don't have those tickets.
There was no vote on the minutes. On the transportation, on the minutes, the title of it is review and vote on the transportation. Strike the word vote.
Okay. All right, so next, we're going to say hi to Mr. Jay Barrows, Representative Jay Barrows. Thanks for coming.
What do you want me, right on the podium?
The guillotine.
Notice my friends aren't here. I think, do we call them that? No.
They're in high school.
Thanks for having me and allowing me to stop by. Congratulations to everyone with their new positions, and thank you for what you do. You got a tough job, and I just want to say that to the staff, the students, the administration, with what you guys, the limits that you've been working under, you've managed to continually pull off a wonderful product. I've always been impressed with the students here in Norton and the good work that they do. Congratulations to you guys. I assume you're soon to leave on that June 1 date, but really, it's been remarkable to see the students, and that's what we're all here for. We're here for the kids. So I'm not the bearer of necessarily good news. I don't think I'm necessarily bringing bad news. The state is doing all that it can in trying to rectify the circuit breaker we did have some success in the House budget a couple weeks ago. I think Dr. Vaydah, it was $239,000 more number in there?
It'll be 104 directly to us.
Okay.
Which takes the 395 down to 291 for this fiscal year in special education.
We do have an opportunity to revisit that one more time in the supplemental budget, right? Apparently what happened, and again, I would love to tell you, and I'm an expert on this, but I'm not, when Dessey put the numbers together, which would have been off the 17, I don't think they factored it in a tuition increase. And so that threw the number, you started hoping to hit 75, it came in at 68. It's a moving target anyway, as everyone knows. So I think it's certainly the intention of the state to fund it. It's just, how do we leapfrog to get it there? So I know that that's happening. We did have, House Ways and Means budget had a little bit of an increase over the governor's budget. Again, we're looking at better revenue picture. It feels like around $40 billion, we're going to end up with $750 million more than we kind of thought we were going to, and there's some caution to that because of, and you've probably already read the papers, a lot of people prepaid because of the federal tax changes in December, so we even saw money here within the community kind of bubble up. So we're just not absolutely certain that we didn't collect, you know...
Excess funds.
Excess money. So we have to be, you know, cautious. And by statute, a portion of that excess has to go into the rainy day fund. We've been using that money over the last eight years, I think, to keep, you know, keep ahead balance, keep ahead balance. So some of that by statute has to go back into the rainy day fund. So, and I think one other point to make is we do have a whole harmless agreement where if enrollment drops, as we've been experiencing, we're not giving you less than you got the year before. So you, you know, that's, would give anybody a sleepless night with the way enrollments are moving, that if that was going to get whacked too, but at least it's not going to go below that floor. I know that charter schools have been, obviously, a concern on everyone's mind, even theirs, on the rhetoric and the talk, and we hoped with full day kindergarten that we would slow the growth or the exits from the Norton system, and hopefully that's happened, stabilized. But birth rates are low, we haven't seen a tremendous number of kids coming in, so I think this is what we've got, you know? And I don't know at what point the state will deal with some of the foundation budget recommendations that a lot of people spent 18 months going over. We were able to put a little bit more money in this year for the cost of benefits, which is killing us. And one of the things, just for all of us to know, 44% of our state budget is spent on mass health. 44%. So over $16 billion is off the table before you print the money. That's really realistically what's happening. So when we see increases, and it's the same as the community experiences, as values go up, new businesses come in, you hope to see your revenues rise, but when, you know, the state sees an extra billion dollars in mass health, it's $16 billion, which covers over 25% of the state's population, I have my own opinion that how can it be with the lowest unemployment rate in the country, the highest minimum wage in the country, how can we have that number of people on? And the majority party, not to be partisan, but the majority party has refused three years in a row to make some, what I consider necessary changes to enrollment, to make sure that those people that are in need are getting coverage, and those people that can afford to pay a little bit more do it, like the rest of us, and we're not getting any traction with that. And so with you folks, you know, working on the ground, and this is the ground level, or looking at additional sources from the state to help, you know, bridge the gap, we don't have the money, because more is going out than is coming in based on new revenue projections. So it's really a challenge, and that thing is just sword in enrollment and in cost. If anybody's been to the doctor lately or the hospital, you know exactly what I'm talking about. You guys live it every day with your own benefit structure. How do you manage it? It costs more money each year than what you bring in, in new revenue. So hopefully, you know, there's a number of folks that feel pretty confident as we move forward. The Senate's going to get another crack at the budget. They begin deliberations next week, so they've got one more month than the House did, they have four more months than the governor did. So, you know, hopefully we can see, you know, again, some more increases in the revenue that will allow them to do a little bit more. Your voices are being heard on Beacon Hill, I got to tell you, and I appreciate it, Superintendent, and all of you, you're communicating. Regional schools are struggling with their regional school transportation. It was a promise made 30 years ago when tried to pull some of these small school districts together to regionalize, that the state would cover transportation. Well, guess what? That was 30 years ago. So now they're down, and each year it keeps getting, not increased, but not cut, but it just keeps, you know, staying flat. So these other school districts that are regionalized that went and made the commitment, the state's not holding that promise. Again, there's only so much money to go around. From an economic development standpoint, Norton, I think, is on the verge. I'm really excited about the prospects of Route 123 and 495, that land being rezoned for commercial development. The Tri-Town Chamber of Commerce, which represents Mansfield, Norton, and Foxborough, is holding on, I think it's May 19th. We're having a kind of a symposium inviting realtors, business development people, statewide folks into a meeting in Foxborough to talk about the potentials, opportunities that we have. And Norton has one of the biggest tracks available with sewer and water. So I really think that being the last vestige between, you know, here in the Cape, I think we're going to see some activity there, which is going to help. Anilo is getting ready to get ramped up. As you all know, that was a huge win-win, there with the number of jobs that they have and the taxes that they will pay. So I think we'll see that number of commercial tax base rise, and that will obviously help. The rezoning on Route 140 will also help as well. So I think we're on the cusp here of seeing some really good things happen, because the economy is strong, we've got unemployment down to 3% in all sectors of unemployment categories, they're down, and it seems like there's no end in sight of that business activity that's taking place, so I think it's going to hopefully lift all, you know, lift all boats. So that's kind of my overview. I know that we'll be working with Senator Feeny to see if there's other needs that can, you know, can be met. But hopefully, and I know we're working on the sewer issue, which is a big number. I was choked when I saw how big the number was. But that will rectify a lot of problems, and we have to get the community, and we all have to do this, is get everybody willing to make that investment. It's not always about taxes, it's about a lot of things, right? And I know that you're doing well with school choice. Out of my three towns, me, it's with Foxborough, Norton, you're the only ones that have jumped to do that, and I think it's paying off, because you've got a great school district. You really, really do, and one that everybody should be proud of. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, or at least take the questions and defer them to my colleagues who aren't here.
So I think I just want to start off by thanking you for coming tonight and the work that you've done to get the extra $104,000. I just, and I know that you say that you're hearing us, but I just need to be able to say this and kind of get it off my chest, because you know me, and that's kind of how I am.
Yeah.
You know, as a town of Norton, we're looking at, you know, an increase from the towns out of 2.8%. Yet our special ed is 4% of an increase. Those are mandates that we have to pay. So, you know, that hurts, and we understand it's nothing, we educate the special, we educate everybody, but it is, we can't even touch the general fund. So I get that the state has no money, it's the same all the way up.
Yeah, it's the same.
I totally get that, but what's the breaking point? Because it's, you know, we have to sit here and we have to make decisions that affect some of these people's lives sitting in this room. That's, you know, people don't understand, it's not easy to sleep at night with those decisions having to be made. So how does, what's the state's plan to help us, the towns, to survive some of these increases that we cannot keep up with?
Well, I know that just out of placement enrollment for some of these students is extremely expensive. I've been over to Abigo, and out of Rome, they run 61, 62 group houses, and they've got Classroom, and Kennedy Down, I've been center with early intervention, and what they're doing with their students that are placed with them. It is outrageously expensive. There's pressure on all of these organizations. Be ballot questioned in November about the minimum wage. We haven't seen anything yet until if that hits, and then paid family leave and some other things that are incorporated and all that, and I don't care how anybody feels about it, it drives up the cost. We have a percentage somewhere between 17.5% and 18% of our student body in Massachusetts is in special ed. You know, I saw numbers last week, autism, one in 65 or one out of 59, it was amazing. You know, 11 years ago, when I came in, it was one out of 130. So I don't know what the answer is, but something does have to give, and the state to take more responsibility, that a lot of responsibility is placed on you, and you're protecting your 25%, you know, assuming we get the full 75% reimbursement, but you're managing that 25, trying to make the right decision for the student and for the district, right? And I've talked to other people about this, why doesn't the state take the whole thing on? And then you'd have some school systems that maybe wouldn't be making that same decision. So it's really, there's a really difficult balance of trying to manage that thing and to try to manage the cost. The collaboratives are important to strike the best deal that you can, but it is a problem, and it's what we, the taxpayer, the consumer, the parent, expect, that there will be no child left behind.
Absolutely.
We've got to pay. So if it's the state taking more of our funds, you know, again, if we could correct some of the mass health problems and have more money there to plug back into these different situations, there's another ballot question that's coming on safe staffing for nursing. Could add $900 million to the annual healthcare budget that we're paying. Where's that going? So those are some things that we have to really be thoughtful about as to where we want to, and what we want to prioritize, but kids are our futures, so we need to fix it.
Any other questions?
Actually, I have two quick questions. So first, has there been any talk of like every form or anything like that? Because I know, I mean, we sit here and we're talking about things from, you know, like when I was in school 30 years ago, and it seems to be, you know, I'm sure there's new ideas out there, but they're not being looked at, or, you know, I mean, as you said, I mean, autism is, I mean, I have a couple of family members on the spectrum, and, you know, some of the social, emotional things that we have to cover and we have to get into, they're not being addressed at the state level, but we're forced at our level to pick up the pieces.
Well, I think the folks that worked on, kind of looking at the whole thing, Foundation Budget Initiative, whatever that group was called, I can't, is that the right name?
Chapter 70, Foundation Review Committee.
Yeah, $2 billion problem. If you're going to fund, not to, you know, beat a dead horse, but it's almost dead. The healthcare stuff is just, it's been crazy over the last decade. Crazy. And, you know, you guys have to negotiate that with the teachers and with the people, the staff, and so forth, and, you know, moving those percentages, and it's not easy stuff. And even at the state level, it's amazing to me that we, since I've been there, again, 11 years, we haven't moved off the dime, it's still 75, 25, and those rates have gone to the moon. So, you know, I mean, there's a lot of reforms that can be done. That Foundation Review budget, they spent a lot of time, and they came up with, you know, a $2 billion price tag. Now, there may be another budget or another question on the ballot, but the millionaire's tax was surcharged. We are, anybody that makes over a million bucks a year is going to pay an additional 4%. And you'll hear some of my colleagues say, well, that money's going to go, the excess revenue, which is about 1.8 to 2 billion, depending on whose tailpipe we're chasing on the state, but, you know, initially, right, a couple billion dollars, the hiding line is, is that money will go towards education and transportation. Well, it goes, we think, it goes into the general fund, and then it's dibby-dobbly. So that 2 billion, yeah, maybe it will go to education, transportation, but the other money that you've been getting will go somewhere else, right? So don't see what I got over here, because it's over here. We've got a sales tax, a ballot question potentially, we could reduce the sales tax from 6.25% to 5%, and that's worth about 1.7 billion. So if people go into the ballot box and say, okay, I'm going to nail my next neighbor who makes $2 million a year, and I'm going to reduce my cost to buy goods from 6.25 to 5, we are, I'm not coming back next year. We're a deep do, you know, but we have to be thoughtful about it. So depending on where anybody lands on that, I mean, I keep saying, how about the national sales tax? Like, one of our meetings a year ago, I asked folks in Norton, and the auditor, how many people bought something online last week? Everybody's hand went up. Look at the tax revenue that we're not catching on the internet. And putting small businesses in bigger ones, out. Drive down 24 by Amazon, how big is that? How many people do you think that used to employ? You know, those little mom and pops all over the place. It's gone. So it's a different world out there, and we need to adjust to it. Ed reform was in 1993, 25 years ago. We've asked for 25 of the last 25, can we fix the funding? Charter school versus the traditional public school. They keep putting more in, right? I don't know. I'm one voice out of 160. You had, did I answer two questions?
Touchdowns a little bit, it was just the charter school even balance, I guess we'll call it, is, you know, the funding for them versus the funding for town.
Well, again, I think, I think some of the remedies that you folks adopted over the last couple of years unfortunately could have been adopted a decade before. And you guys are closer to it than I am with kids and seeing the parents, but I think young parents today are looking like all of us with certainty and consistency, and so, you know, the charter schools, whether it's in Foxborough or it's somewhere else, they're all going to have, they're going to have that mystique, if you will, for people to sign up for them. But again, as I tell everybody that I run into, Norton's one of the best, and your grades and results compare heavily with every other community around here, without question. So that's what you've got to sell. When I first ran in 2006, it was that we didn't have heat in the high school. You know, the parents of four and five-year-old kids, I can't sell my kid, they don't have You know, the parents of four and five-year-old kids, I can't sell my kid, they don't have heat. It's like, what do you mean they don't have heat? And I had a student from Norton, it was my intern at the time, Mary Rodman, who was in 2000...
2005.
I know Peter, you remember that.
Mary Rodman brought her in.
But she was in, I think, a junior or sophomore in high school, and she said, we have heat. We were walking around. I'll put a plug in for Meredith, she's married now, she is now the Economic Development Director for the City of Marlboro. Phenomenal job at 29 years old, master's degree of public administration, a UMass grad, really has done very well, so I'm very proud of her efforts, and it's been kind of fun to watch, so. So, you know, again, we need, I think, again, with anything, right, if you have the revenue, you can make some changes, and I think people are just afraid that at least the leadership, and that can change, doesn't, we had a change in the Senate last week, as many of you know, somebody left. The House, I think we're going to probably see a change in the speakership in another year or two, but, you know, that's what needs to happen, revenue needs to come in, we need to unbundle and fix some of those issues that are significant. I didn't say anything about the MBTI, right? Okay.
Yeah, I've got a lot of time, sorry. So...
So, I want to give you what I think is an easy solve for you guys.
Okay.
And it's going to, I'm going to go back to the charter school funding. And the reason I think it's easy solve for you guys is because for the state, it's fairly budget neutral, right? We're not asking for you to give us any more money, et cetera, et cetera, it's not an issue of taxes. But I've said for years, the formula for the charter school funding is clearly broken. Our per student cost straighten out the charter is what, like, you know?
I don't know.
It's more than $10,000.
I want to say 13.
So, it's $13,000. If we send the child to the charter school, it costs them $13,000 to educate that child. We'll take somebody in for school choice, we get five.
Right.
And we're happy to have it, because I know that we can educate that child for under $5,000, and it's a question of fixed and variable costs, right?
Yeah.
So, their fixed costs are 13,000, that's odd, because their largest cost, which is teacher salaries, is lower than ours.
Right.
The math just doesn't work, and they just added 400 seats. The reason they're doing that is they're making money. This is a profitable business for them. We've got to change that funding structure. At the very least, we should be tiering it and saying, okay, you send X percentage of your students there, it's the 13, and then you break down to eight, to four, or whatever. We're overfunding the charter schools, and they can get all the, you know, the nice little prizes and the bells and the whistles. Meanwhile, we're going to be laying teachers off.
I just want to piggyback on a really important statement, which is, over $1 million in transportation for us, practically nothing on the other side.
Zero there, yeah.
And then, we hover every year between 18, 19 percent special ed, they're coming in at 9 percent, because we know, I mean, there's no out-of-district cost there, right? Because we know what happens, and that's the problem, is that when you go to equate, if I'm spending 13.5 and they're spending 13.5, it's not going to the same place.
Right.
And that's the concern, because if you believe in the competition model like I do, that Norton is the best place to go, then I think there's, you know, people have to recognize that, that's an all-in cost, you know, of which two line items, they're roughly 9 percent less of students would need special services, and out-of-district services add a cost of over 3 million, and transportation, that, I mean, we're feeding our parents with.
It's self-fulfilling prophecy, because as we send kids there, we lose money, the town loses as well, and guess what, then we get less money to send more kids there, and this continues to feed the cycle.
Have we seen the savings, did it slow a little bit?
So, we slowed the savings down, it's happened, I'm asking, we just did this, and we shared it with members of the committee, because we've got questions at FinCom about why did our charter school number go up 260,000 this year? So, we have six more students attending, right? We all know that it's part of that secondary, once one child is in, little brother comes. The reason for the change was in the calculation of demographic diversity. Think about that for a second. In other words, X number of students from this community that are more diverse, of which I get told by Norton parents, I was just recently told, because I held a meeting with charter school parents, and we had a nice group of 15, 18 people that showed up, and it was a great conversation, told them about us and all that, but one of the questions that came up was, I need to have my child around diversity, of what we're not.
Right, and they're 55 percent.
Right, and so, that, but remember, it's 55 percent today. When that school opened up, it was more than 91 percent Caucasian.
Right.
So, to have that formula hit negatively against us because of that issue, it's not something I can compete with. I can't put a big sign that says, please, diversity.
Right, exactly. And everybody seems to struggle with that. I mean, you can't make it up, I mean, you can't, you've got what you've got, you know? But, yeah, afterward, parents that I've spoken with that are there with that number, it's , you wouldn't know that you're in the same place, right? And, believe me, you've been very nice to me tonight, when I go to Foxborough, they feel the same way, it's in their hometown, they're transporting kids there. So, it's even, you know, wider given.
Can I just ask, so how do you get equity? Right, so, how can Norton, which I think we all agree has a really great outcome, I mean, we can sort of see from our graduating class and from our teachers who are so dedicated, but this is a conversation that you and I have had, whether, I don't know if you remember or not, you did walk through my neighborhood 11 or 12 years ago.
Did I? What is good, Dan?
Your intern was with you. So, but we've had multiple conversations, I've had multiple conversations with Dr. Gansay over the years. I think it becomes very alarming and concerning when we are compared to an institution that is clearly has a different funding structure.
Right.
There is absolutely no equity in that structure, and these are conversations for now the past 15 years, I still do not understand why somebody hasn't looked at it. So, as Dana shared, we potentially are looking at a clear, huge budget problem. And Sherry, was it 2.8 is sort of what we're getting?
2.8 percent.
2.8 percent from the town, when we know our special education budget is up 4 percent, so just do the math, right? So, we're a percent off somewhere. And unfortunately, I don't really know if the charter schools are struggling like that, right? Are they struggling where they're going to be laying off teachers? If we are sending them $13,000 per student plus pay for their busing, we have our families here who are paying themselves to be on the bus.
Right.
So, I guess the frustration, for so many years, I've been trying to have this conversation, and nobody can seem to answer why there is such a discrepancy in the formula. Everybody just says, it's the formula, it's the formula. Well, honestly, with respect, I'm sick of the formula, because now we have a group of people sitting here who potentially are going to be affected because we don't have a potential supportive budget.
Right. So, there's a couple of supports, right? One is the community. And the community unfortunately said no last year to an override.
Absolutely.
Many of you worked really, really hard. The second is the sales pitch. Back when we met 11 or 12 years ago, we'd gone through a tough override fight then, and we still had a tremendous product of students that were graduating from here and participating here. And so, the work that Dr. Bayard is doing, meeting with those parents, I mean, we have to continually sell as a community the values of this school. There's a big difference, whether it's LG, you know, where do you go with these 250 kids, right? Your high school classes, that everybody knows your name. Although some people have picked diversity as their, what they want to do, it's individual choice, but we also have to resell the whole idea of this, the investment that we made in the high school, 30 million bucks, the community stepped up and did that. So, we've got to get those two things in tandem. I don't know what the future of education looks like, that's what you guys get to decide, but it's the amount of information that's streaming into our kids' heads today, it's amazing. And we couldn't have had this conversation 11 years ago, like, my phone is like, could have landed the thing on the moon, on the moon, right, the Apollo, I mean, it's amazing. And our kids are being exposed to this, so they weren't 11 years ago. They have cell phones, they have the internet on their fingertips. So, there's so many things that have changed. One of the things that doesn't change is the frequency in which state government will do things, because people now have gotten ingrained in different segments of the lobbying field, right? Whether it's the teachers' union, or the superintendents, or MMA, or, you know, you name it, healthcare people, and they get into these positions and they hang on. And so, yeah, we spend a lot of time, money and effort to come up with some solutions in the foundation budget, and there are many people, many of my colleagues, looking at ways like, how are we going to do it? And then you are the taxpayer, the same people you went to, that we go to statewide, and we says, I don't want to pay tolling, you know, I don't want to pay an additional buck to, you know, ride the train from, you know, Mansfield to Boston so I don't have to spend an hour and 50 minutes in traffic. They don't want to pay for anything. And sometimes government hasn't been real good collectors, you know, to enforce, hey, we are doing the right thing with the money. So, it's a challenge. So, how do you provide a product and get both sides to contribute? So, and again, as I said at the outset, that healthcare thing is, it's like, your special ed, it's the killer at the state level. When you look at 44 percent of your budget, you said $3 million, I think was the number you just mentioned for special ed. Kids need to be obviously taught, but how do we do it? You know, how do we do it effectively and in the most appropriate way? So, it is not easy, and I apologize if I ramble.
So, I'll give you the backend, if the backend of it is, you can rectify it by changing the school choice number.
Yeah.
So, instead of 5,000, go to 7,500.
Right.
There's a competition mode for it, and that helps us out, right?
Imagine that, but if the school, if the charter schools, we just have to vote where no, that the additional charter schools weren't going to happen, I think that's saying that the state is looking at charter schools, or should be at least.
Well, the other idea that many people keep to run is about your program, and let the kids go where they may. That can be a little scary too, right? Because you live and die by the sword, right? So, if we did that, and we said, okay, everyone in the Commonwealth is going to get 13,500 bucks, how about, maybe chaos? So, it's...
Or a dime.
What's that?
Or a dime, but certainly.
I know, I know, I know.
Take my chances.
So, Representative Bowes, first of all, thanks for the constant communication back and forth on getting us that extra $104, and hopefully it becomes a little bit more. You're the lead person on communicating with us on that, so I appreciate it. So, I'm, as the superintendent association, I can't speak for them because I know they were very involved, I was involved in the background with the whole chapter 70 thing. I think it's too big. I think it's too scary and it's too big. You know, you're talking about, we're not paying you, we're not providing $2 billion worth of what we should as a community, right? So, that's part one. I've been saying that for a long time, because I think that scares people, you know, it sounds like an out-of-control, instead of being a report that says we're underfunding something, it sounds like, oh, misuse of funds, right, it took place, so that's one. So, but there are a couple of things that I think we should take the lead on, if you will, and I would ask that you consider a couple of things. One is that special education, when it comes into the realm of tuitions that are above X, Y, and Z number, let's just choose a number of 150,000, that the state is going to do more than the circuit breaker, because it's not enough. And what happens is, I would go further and say, we could control some of that by looking at enrollment dates. Perfect story, eight students this year, of which three or four literally came in, one on March 23rd is a cost share. We, I can't budget for this right now, you know, so what are we doing? We're carrying $300,000 in special ed tuition, right, for next year, of which we normally have carried 200,000, and I did that because I know that those students are already going to be part of that problem for next year, right, in terms of the cost.
Right.
Because we want to educate them. So, that's one problem, or one potential long-term solution. The circuit breaker account that allows for extraordinary relief, it's at 125 percent above and beyond what you spent the prior year. It's, for a community like us, it's almost unattainable, right? When you look at SRO, there's an SRO, a number of SRAs, I know the chief is here now for this, but there's a number of SRO bills out there, right? Some of them quote creative, where they talk about hiring retired police officers and all that. I mean, I've made it very clear to both our chief and to my association that this is not the way to resolve this issue, it causes, who's got arrest powers, who's got, you know, all of that stuff. What I would actually say is, we know that there's a climb in issues in schools. It's really simple. Maybe Massachusetts has just been darn lucky, right? But we know that we here in Norton could use a second SRO. And I think if we went back to the days of looking at a grant process where, you know, year one, you're going to get 95 percent, year two, you're going to get 50 percent, year three, you're going to get 10 percent, year four, you own it, that would give communities like Norton and others the potential, because it's not that big of a number, right? It's not $2 billion worth of that, right? And I think that's, so I think we have to look at piecemealing our issues. When I sat down and received some of that internal documentation on the chapter 70, there's four communities that probably are going to get very close to zero increase, and you're currently standing in one of them.
Right.
Right? Because of the whole formula and how it works for us. It just, you know, we didn't see what my last community would see, which is 850,000 dollar increase.
Right.
I mean, those are changing numbers.
Well, you've got, you know, this community is not really second anybody. I mean, the home values are significant, for the most part, you know, compared to your peers. So, that's a factor, the enrollment plays a role.
Yeah.
You know, so, and, you know, to the officers, I hear you loud and clear, I mean, there's a lot of, we do a lot of knee-jerk reaction things. This community was probably one of the first to put a police officer within the school organization, and it's worked. They were here back in '07 when we started the drug and alcohol thing, and they were here, they were working with these kids, and I think that's a true testament to the commitment.
I just think that the only way we're going to be able to address some of these issues needs to be something that takes us back to the smaller picture, and competitive grants even would be another way to do it. I mean, I would offer that economic development has been a very strong part of the governor's last four years. He's probably going to get another four years. But I think in this day and age of saying that 164 communities in the Commonwealth are only getting, according to his budget, $20 more per student, which for us is a little over $50,000.
Right.
I don't know if that's a fair shake of the pie of educating students at the cost that special education, ELL, I mean, we just put in $15 million to help our American citizens coming out of Puerto Rico, right? Just like that, we put money into making sure that schools won't burden with that. But that's not an equal distribution either, as you know. I mean, we had one family that was with us for a short time and then left, but we came up with money. $20 in this day and age out of the governor, with all due respect, because I know he's a member of your party, a good party by the way, is, it's a sham. I hate to say it that way, it is not, he is not critically looking at traditional pre-K to 12 public schools.
But he is one of the three.
So, my party, my party on the other side of it, they're standing flat on it too.
Right. And when I sat and witnessed, if anybody ever wants to see some of the budget amendments and the things that were done in terms of earmarks, I swear it was distributed by zip code.
Yeah.
You know, and we're so Boston-centric that it just, it drives you crazy.
Three-fourths of the stuff that we get updated during the year, you and I talk about this all the time, you've called me on a health bill, you called me on a cleaning instruments bill. What? I mean, all of a sudden, we had a $10,000 line item, we don't even have that problem, so why create a financial problem when we don't have a problem? But, you know, I know it's later to the evening and others might have questions, but just remind the governor that it's 02766. He's a North American, they're comparing any time you like. We'd love to host them.
I would love to bring him, he has been here a couple of times, and, you know, again, it's a privilege and an honor to represent Norton. I do appreciate the work that you all do, and, you know, again, the schools and the staff and the students. And I know that eventually, someday, there'll be some bold initiative that somebody have enough to crank up 81 votes in the House, 21 in the Senate, and break the thing open. But it's very frustrating as a member of the minority party, there's 1 of 34, in my 34, we couldn't ride the same bus together, I mean, because we're all over the place. So, it's really difficult to try to, you know, move it forward, but we talk about it all the time, and we keep pushing, and it's really just pushing leadership to recognize the fact that in the suburbs, we have some real challenges. And again, in spite of all that, you guys do a great job, so.
I think we just have one more.
I just want to, in closing, I want to say that we gave Representative Bowes kind of a hard time tonight, but I do want to say that whatever 10, 12 years I've been doing this, you've always been... been good to us. You show up, which is no half-bell, quite frankly. So I want to thank you for all the work.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Because you have been there for us in the past, and I'm sure you will in the future.
We will, we'll be in the, in the future. So hang in there and fingers crossed that the Senate, Senate...
Is this a campaign ad? This is a perfect R and D debate right now.
Love it. But thank you. All right, and I got to take you up to another meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, so next we're going to move to Mrs. Megan Laffey, the high school principal, for the introduction of the class of 2018 valedictorian and salutatorian.
All right, so there's a change in topics, but I'm very happy tonight to introduce Brooke Murphy and Tristan Greve as our salutatorian and valedictorian. And so Brooke is our salutatorian and Tristan is our valedictorian. And it's interesting because I remember the distinct moment that I met each of these students, which doesn't happen very often as building principals, so I'll tell you a little bit about it. So Brooke was, it was the end of her sophomore year, and she is the, she and her sister actually are the only students in my eight years of administration who wanted to take a class early. Do you remember the year? Yeah, so they're the only ones who wanted to take AP Calculus before their senior year, and were begging for an exception. And we don't allow that because we want them to have calculus as close to college as possible because they'll be going from AP Calc to college calculus. So it tells you something about a student when they're begging to go into a high-level math class before any of their peers. And then Tristan, I remember meeting during high school quiz show practice, and I didn't know who he was really. I knew him a little bit because he had an older brother who came through the school. But he was just, we had all sorts of questions. It was literature, it was pop culture, it was math, and he was just answering those questions. What really stuck in my head and probably will forever is geography. He was, were you a sophomore? The first year, that's what I thought, a sophomore, and he knew the capital, I think, of every city in the world, of every country in the world. He knew the capital city. So these are two amazing students. Above and beyond those two personal students, they are members of honor societies, they have the highest GPAs in the class, they are dedicated to their school, they are hardworking, and they are well-deserving of this tribute tonight. So congratulations.
Well, first of all, congratulations on behalf of the entire system, especially if you've been with us since you were this big and all the way up, which I know you've spent some time with us. So to Brooke Elizabeth Murphy, salutatorian, congratulations. We'll do pictures in a minute by Tristan Ryan-Greve, who's our valedictorian. Just as a couple of side notes, where are we going to school next year? We down to any decision yet?
I'm going to University of Pennsylvania.
You, hey, and?
You must know first.
Perfect, excellent. Congratulations to you both. Majors?
Biology.
Nursing, biology. So, you know, once again, at top of the class is doing something in steam every single year. I talk to five to 10 students every single year, something to do with science, technology, engineering, nursing's fantastic. Biology, don't forget that teaching degree. You can always go back. We don't mind good employees, you know, we might be hiring them, you never know. I hope so, I hope so. On a side note with Tristan, I just wanted to mention that he's one of those kids who came to me when I first got here, and we were having conversation about changing our school, and he had opportunities to go elsewhere. And I want to thank both families, to be quite honest, for taking a chance on keeping your kids with us, for allowing them to show us the way to improve, to do better, to provide another opportunity, and most importantly, I think, to build our school culture. I mean, you two are so involved. Your GPAs, I don't even, can't even read it, can't even write it. Mine wasn't ever close to that, I can assure you of that. But most importantly, I think you've brought a positive culture to our schools because of everything that you've done. So congratulations, thank you to the families, and let's do some pictures. And as I say every year, I think it takes great kids with the best teachers around. I say that every single year, and I believe in that. So, not the administrators, but...
I was Brooke's second grade teacher.
You were Brooke's second grade teacher? Well, that just makes you feel a little older?
I'm old.
Maybe, just a tiny bit.
I have a great book story, but...
You do?
Yeah.
Do you want to share?
So all year long, Brooke and Stephanie told me that their April Fool's trick every year was to switch places and to see how long it took their teachers to figure it out. So on April Fool's Day, a Murphy twin walked into my classroom, and I looked at her, and I'm like, do I look like Brooke? She's like, I am Brooke. We're not supposed to be Brooke today. So Brooke and I walked upstairs to Mrs. Allen's room, we called Stephanie into the hallway, and I went like this. And that was the trick. They didn't switch places that year.
That's good, that's a good story. Let's take pictures with these folks, you want to get on the other side?
Yeah.
We'll do it this way?
Right there, too.
This is good?
All right.
Jesus, this is making fun of you.
I'm worried.
How about family? We have some family in the back, family over here, so we're going to... Come on. She wants you up here, I know she does, come on.
It's a wrong step.
Tristan, why don't you stand to the side a little bit? We'll focus up as well.
Come on, Mom.
This is one of my favorite things to do.
I feel... Your sock.
I want a picture of the sock. Really, thank you. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Come on up. This has happened before, I think, too. Go on. Thank you, thank you, congratulations.
Yes, they do.
So I just want to say real quick to the both of you, I read the letters that your counselors had written about you, and it's so incredibly impressive. Thank you for all that you've done at Norton. We really do appreciate it, you're a great role model for the kids. See, I'm going to cry again. Thank you. Nice job, guys. Good luck next year.
So I'm going to ask you guys what I ask every year, how the speeches going?
Uh, I haven't started.
I'm on page five of mine this year. I had mine, then I got voted out. I was on last year.
All right, next, window project presentation by Architectural Consulting Group.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to introduce Don Mallozo, who's here as our owner project manager for the middle school, excuse me, for the HAY JCS-LGN MSBA-approved window project at 55.63% reimbursement. We've had a, nothing but a professional, hard-working, back and forth about just everything you can in these projects. We're really happy with our OPMs and the work that they're providing for, so, Don, welcome.
So thanks for having us tonight to explain the window project that we're hoping the town decides to undertake. The good news is that they're bringing some money here, charter schools aren't getting them, so. There's one takeaway tonight, you got to win on that one. The school projects are for Yale, Norris, and Solomon East, that's right. The MSBA Accelerated Repair Program, it's designed for schools that are in good shape except for their windows, boilers, and roofs. This year, 69, or 2017 is when the statement of interest was submitted to MSBA. 69 schools out of, I think the original number was over 100, but 69 schools qualified based on MSBA's criteria. So they said, MSBA doesn't have enough money to fund 69 projects, so they created some stricter criteria. And they got down to 36 schools that they could fund, and Norton has three of them, which is, a lot of communities might get one, but MSBA saw the need in three of your schools that qualified for this program. Next slide. So Norton's project is going to be a replacement of windows indoors. Some of the things in the project, ADA upgrades are necessary when the estimated cost of the project is more than 30% to state code. I think we're below that, so we should save the town some money. We're going to make it so, we're going to structure the project so you, you fit under that threshold, that we don't have to do major upgrades to the schools. There will be some bathroom renovations and some water fountains, but minor ADA work. Obviously, all the new doors we put in are all going to be ADA-compliant hardware with subsequent dimensions. All that work is, we're good. Our timeline is the Norton Town Meeting, I guess, next week, on the 14th. With your support, hopefully the town will support the project. If they do, we'd like to start design in July. We'd have the design complete hopefully the end of August, it'd be up to mid-September. We try to award the contract in November. This next date is my projection, my experience, I've done 20/60s projects in the last five years for MSBA. It's a lot of work to do in the summer, it almost can't be done. So we'd like to start the project in April if possible. Again, this, this hasn't been vetted by your committee to approve it or the superintendent. Currently, my friend's doing a project in New Bedford in a Level 5 school, and they have extended day, they have, you know, less vacation days, and we're able to, in that school, to actually install the windows at night and not interfere. We've installed air conditions into the classrooms, we've provided temporary windows, and we've, we've developed some neat means of installing windows during the school year and keep the school operating and get the job done. Why we would start in April, because, you know, the 10 weeks in the summer just don't work, but if you look out right now, it's light out still. And come September, if the job runs over in September, it's already getting dark. So we get more production, if we start in the spring, it's warmer. So, again, depending upon how things go, Town Meeting, that would be the next thing, we'd like to have the superintendent and some representatives come down and look at another project and see how it functions in the school while the school's open and operating. Me, Bill Sylvia from T2 Architects, he's the designer of recping. I'm going to let him go through the scope and then I'll close. I just also introduce Jess Seas, a big part of the project. Jeff does a lot of the legwork and works with Bill, and is a wealth of knowledge, so.
What do you think? I'm Bill Sylvia from T2 Architects. So what I'm going to be doing is walking through each of the schools, I'm going to go through Norris, Yale, and Solomon East, in that order, and just going to show what we found in existing conditions regarding the use of windows, some of the envelope issues. So, we'll start here. So this, this photo here, the photos here, shows some of the existing windows, which we think are, were replaced with windows back in 1987. We don't really have records of that, but they're very similar to the windows that we placed at the Yale School, and we have records of that one set in 1987. So what you can see here is, you got deterioration of the window frames, the sealants, and the masonry, masonry around the windows, and some localized cracking of the masonry, and some deteriorated rusted metal sections. This little image here is actually an original blueprint from the existing drawings of the school of 1959. It actually shows a wall section of the building, and this is masonry construction, and shows the old hope steel windows, which they weren't going to install, which is the thin mason glass, but those were removed and those were replaced. So same, same school, more of the same existing conditions, that's the typical foldings inside the classroom. The upper panel of the existing, they're now opaque panels, and then there's single run units just below that that's shades. The front entrance has the existing storefront, which has some, shows a little rusting at the bottom edge, but we'll take care of that. And this is a typical shot of window sill, and essentially the construction is steel frame, those sills there are slate sills, and then the jams are made of masonry, so. Okay, these photos here show some of the doors. The doors are robust, well-steel frames, although they're not thoroughly improved. They're in good condition, some of them recently painted. I can see an existing door there with no eyewear on it. Many doors have been updated with eyewear. Eyewear upgrades, and... And that's an existing detail of how it's constructed. So this, this slide here, now we'll be keeping them with a full scope. So we're replacing all the windows, install front door paint flush. We would install child guard glass. It's similar to bulletproof, but it's not bulletproof glass. It helps with someone trying to get in, it holds them back for five to 10 minutes so that police and school administration can... We're in the gym, the high windows there, we replace that with a cowl wall system, which is a high-performance translucent panel. It allows light through, but usually it's your... I believe we have a sun, the lights right in there to the gym area. Replace and repair interior finishes, as I was mentioning before. Once we install those windows, the masonry and the sills, we'll have to repair and replace those if those get affected or anything. We'll replace all the window shades that are there with new. And then just some envelope issues, replace envelope sealants, including control joints, and it just gives you the your quantities and how many. Same thing with cut and point, re-point, and replace cracked brick. There's several sills in the Norris School that need to be cleaned and painted. We will replace all the exterior doors with fully thoroughly improved, welded frames and insulated doors. We'll replace the existing front storefront system, repair any damaged concrete in approximately eight locations. And as Don mentioned, is that we're going to be upgrading the toilet, we have to provide one unisex toilet, and we'd have to provide an accessible water fountain. And the main security of all doors will remain as assistant they have now. And then the other, the other issue we're doing is we're keeping the existing air conditioning units in windows, and in the other classrooms that don't have any air conditions, we're going to provide a panel that's removable so a future air conditioner could be added to each classroom. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with Norris, over here, the top plan is existing, it's off the main car, and it's up, showing the girls' room with the two water closets and the two sinks. And what we're doing, the proposed, is we would renovate that single room into two rooms so that we can create a unisex toilet, and at the same time create, I think it says, a girls' toilet room that isn't accessible. So we can still keep the water closet now. And this, this, this plan here is the festival, as it stands now, but there's no real airlock, so you may want to consider that for, you know, energy compliant festival. It's, it's, they do not know all of it. This plan here just shows you, you have roughly 18 exterior doors. The upper elevation, partial elevation is obviously the gym, the high windows, but what's shown there is the cowl wall infill. And then down at the low level is a typical classroom wing, just a portion of it, and just with the new windows, there'll be insulated glazing with firmly broken frames. We would use a project out or project in window with screens. And one of those panels is probably, what, three or four classrooms right there, there'll be panels designated to fit an air conditioning. Oh, that's okay, that's okay. No, that, over there is just a swatch color, so we could add color to each of the schools too, which could be... All right, so the estimate, the estimate came in at 1,935,796, and the assessed value is 1.8, so we are over on the 30% assessed value, but we... So, we are over on the 30% assessed value, but we feel that we can reduce that. And one of the alternatives would be to maybe pull some interior painting away. You can see that's worth about $25,000. And there's other alternatives that we can work out, and we're not concerned with that. Okay, so in Yale, there's two buildings there. So, there's the fifty-four addition, which is the one-story structure that goes down along the back. And then there's the forty-eight building. So, this slide here is showing the fifty-four addition. And some of the photos of the issues are about the windows. It's very similar from school to school. Here again, this is showing some of the insulated gate, glazing unit phase, some of the windows apart. We have some masonry in the corner that's cracked. We have some glass block that there was attempts to replace, but it's similar material. It's not the same style of glass block. And these are just some of the window details. This slide here is on the forty-eight building. So, we have issues on the existing windows, the windows. That they're rusted, and they need to be cleaned and painted. These other, some of those, the classroom interior shows that we need to deal with. Some wood sills and acoustical sealants that we'll deal with when we install them. And here we have some of the exterior doors. Again, some of the doors have been replaced, and some of them haven't. Some of them are wood, and they're non-insulated. So, we would be replacing all these doors. We would be reworking the main entrance, the center photo with the white paint. And as the photo comes, I mean, there's a slide, and I'll explain it for you in a minute, but we have to actually increase the depth of that vestibule to make it fully compliant. So, proposed scope included for Yale, replace all windows. Install front door flashings, child guard, first floor windows only. Replace the glass block with cowl wall, or we could go back. Repeat on the adjacent interior finishes affected by the new work. Replace all window shades. Cut control joints, and install the next three or four areas. And this is continuation of the proposed scope. Like I said, we would be putting in, thoroughly improved all the doors and frames. We would repair those spalling areas, concrete patchwork. We revise the main entrance. That's what would be accessible. We pick one of the, we have an accessible toilet room. There's a plan coming up, I'll show you that. And then we have to upgrade a lot of the water fountains. We maintain all the security of all the doors. So, this slide here shows the toilet room that we would take and renovate. It's essentially across from the gymnasium. And so, right now, the existing door sprints are on the way that Brad lies on the right way. So, we're close to changing that to an accessible one. This drinking fountain here is just to the left of the entrance when you come into main school entrance, just to the left. We'll replace that with a new high-low. And then there's the plant. So, we're just off by about sixteen, eighteen inches. We need to make that compliant. So, this plan here is showing all the dual locations that we would replace. So, we took partial elevations of the forty-eight building and fifty-four building. We showed the existing, what's there existing, the bulk. Photos, and then the bottom is an option of the new design for it. So, the existing windows are single line, the top opaque panel. But in the new, we're gonna take away that opaque panel. We're gonna put glass all the way up. We're gonna create light wells inside the classrooms. Pull the ACT ceiling back, create a light wall so we can go right into the classroom. And we will have shades projected as well. And those will be project-out or projected, same window system, insulated with firmly broken frames. And the photos down below just to show you, we can take an old situation and make it look a little cleaner. So, the estimate for Yale came out at $3,160,960. There'll be the alternates here, and we're just below the assessed value. So, about 30%. Once you hit the 30%, no, you have to, you have to build it fully compliant. So, we want to, we're gonna get this in. All right, so Solon East. This building is a little bit newer. It was built in seventy-six, but the windows are the existing windows. So, what, forty years old. They are kind of the worst type of window, a sliding window for efficiency. They're leaking, and they've passed their life. And the other issue is there's no fall restraint elements when those windows open up. It's just wide open. So, you can see some of the photos here with the interior finishes. That's actually a wood sill. And the wood sills were added years after this construction, because originally it was gypsum wall that we turned in. So, it just shows the water damage. And then, and then the photo on the left is a building control joint. That's all opened up. That needs to be cut out after what, sealant, close it up because water's getting into the envelope. And again, it just shows you some of the windows. Some of the windows have been painted, deteriorated. The sealants were applied properly, so it's blocking some of the moisture trying to come out. Especially the lintels at the window pads. Some, it's just, they closed off the leak holes. And then again, we have some lintels that were chipped out and rusted and need to be replaced. Here again, we have the doors. Some of them in good shape. Some of them have issues. One photo shows a hole at the bottom of the door. But they're, you know, they're robust welded steel frames. They're good frames, but they're not thoroughly broken. Okay, so the proposed scope here, similar to the other two schools. Replace all windows. Install front door and flashings. Child guard door, first floor door. Replace all window shades. Replace envelope sealants, including the control joints. Cracked bricks in certain areas. Cut and point. They're deteriorating more, something's happened. Remove sealant applied to leading edge of lintels, like I mentioned. There's a lot of that on the windows. Clean and paint the steel windows. Repair doors and frames, or replace. Well, right now, we're doing replacement. An accessible toilet room and a drinking fountain are upgraded. There's a plan showing that coming up. And maintain security at all doors. And then the same issue with air conditioners. We'll keep the air conditioners where they are. Obviously, rebuild and put in the windows. But every classroom, there'll be a panel that can be removed to add air condition. So, the upper photo on the left is a sort of existing elevation partial. You can see the large windows that just will slide open. And so, the proposed, at this point, is break that, break that up into just small units and have a project-out or project-in window with screens. And again, just some other photos of work we've done, we've taken, renovated, cleaned up. So, this is one of the toilet rooms. It's actually designated as a unisex toilet, but it doesn't quite meet the dimension, the clear side dimension is a little bit shy and missing Bradlars, and so we're gonna make that. And then right adjacent to that, this other drinking fountain would add the high-low there. And then there's a, there's a proposed airlock for the bus drop-off at the school. That doesn't exist right now, and it would be added up underneath the existing main. So, at Solon East, you have roughly fifteen doors that we're gonna be replacing. So, maintain the security. And the budget at Solon East is $1,932,864. The add-on, the add-guess you would cost about $37,000. And then we are well below the 30% assessed value for Solon East. And I'm gonna turn it back a little bit.
Okay, so I'll summarize. So, the reimbursement rate is 55.63, as Joe mentioned. Bill's numbers were construction, on top of construction. Somebody's gonna pay myself. They're gonna pay Bill. There's a lot of extra costs that come into a project. So, the budget for Norris, the overall, and I call it the all-in budget, is $2,152,492. The state would reimburse $1,144,935. The town share would be $1,757,7,057. Solon East, the overall all-in budget is $2,423,475. The state would reimburse $1,288,874. The town share on that project would be $1,134,301. The Yale School, that's the largest, that all-in budget is $3,901,304. Reimbursement of $1,288,874 with the town share of $2,612,430. Again, these budgets also include contingency. As you're designing a project, you do your best to cover all the costs, but we put 5% in there in case there's unforeseen conditions. We also add another 2% in case there's design issues that we encounter that's compared to designer. One more added slide. We'll talk about the school guard glass. So, relatively new. Bill was explaining. This represents a nine-millimeter that didn't, it's not bulletproof, but a nine-millimeter. I touched the smartphone. This is a sledgehammer. So, what it does is, you know, if you had a high-powered rifle, you could shoot through it, but the glass doesn't collapse. By code, you have to have tempered glass at doorways. And all you have to do is throw a spark plug casing at it, and it shatters and falls out. Somebody can get easy access to your school. So, this glass has a film in it, and it gives you time to go out the back door, for the police to arrive, for the police to get into your school and help you out. It's a lot safer. Obviously, we all know it's in the news. I've got current projects that, right now, are in construction, and the cities and towns are actually taking the glass they've bought, and they're saying, let's throw it away. Let's put this glass in there. Because we know what the real cost of somebody tries to enter a school. So, this particular school, the superintendent actually went to MSBA and says, "Hey, this is really not in the program, but makes sense to put it in." And MSBA, and I think this is the first school they've approved funding of this extra, you know, upgraded glass. So, it's another benefit of the project. It does cost a little bit more money, but these windows are gonna be there for at least another 30 years. It just makes sense over the length of the project. Is there any questions that I can?
So, we do have one quick question. If you could go back one slide. So, right now, when we're looking at this, the reimbursement rate of 55.63. We'll take the Solon East, for instance. The budget is $2,423 and change.
Yeah, the Yale numbers are wrong, right?
Yeah, because they're the same.
Shouldn't it be more?
Yeah.
And just to kind of tack on to that, the reimbursement rate is not based on the entire budget. It's based on some portion of the budget. Is that correct?
Nope.
Because those numbers do not add up to 55.63% as a budget.
Don, I think you can talk about the eligible versus ineligible expenses.
That's what I'm asking. Is there something that's not? Okay, if they're ineligible expenses, you've answered the question. That's...
Right, there are some.
All right, but that bottom number was...
Well, I mean, our job is to strive to get you as close to that 55.63.
No, no, this number is wrong, but the reason they're not...
Yeah, this number is...
Because there's something inherent in that.
The actual number...
There's a typo on it.
I got it, if you want me to give it.
Yeah.
It's $2,074,954.
For the Yale? I'm sorry, did you say that right?
Reimbursement for the Yale.
Is what?
Could you do the town share, Tim? Do you have that? I can do it. I'm sure if you had it, you'd have to answer it.
So, there's two processes, if I could, Don, just to bring to the committee. We presented the overall budget design, if you will, to the building committee, which voted 4-0 to support the project. The discussion that happened after our OPM left had to do with the ability of the community to borrow and not do a debt exclusion on this project. So, that's really a question that's still pretty much answered. I've seen what a 20-year borrowing looks like. One of the questions that I pushed on is to do, is it appropriate to borrow on what we need versus on the total? Because we do have projects that are coming offline that we borrow on. So, the question here will be, as we're getting closer to town meeting, we should really have that answer. I see it as a borrowing situation, but again, town manager and the board of select may, you know, decide that they have a different answer. We'll know as we get closer to the town meeting, as these numbers are crunched. I'd probably say tomorrow, you should probably send me the final memo of what these numbers look like. So, because we have to borrow on the total project. So, the 8.4 million number is what we have to borrow on. And then the 55.63 of that, of what's considered to be reimbursable by MSBA. So, we can talk about this project at 8.4, and Don used a very key word, "all-in." So, what does that mean? That means that once these projects go out to bid, we may have to look at some changes of the project. The other discussions would be things like the vestibules not necessarily being reimbursable. This is really a push I've made with the OPM, and he agreed, where I feel like at the LG in particular, but also at both the Yale and the JCS, that that air tightness, which is wonderful for the idea of heat, but it also has a secondary issue, and that is a double buzzing system into our schools. Where not only would a person be buzzed in, but then buzzed in a second time now that they're actually in that area for what their business is. Which, by the way, compliments to our staff for what they're doing with that, since we made some changes. The second is the child guard. We have to make sure we always use that name, because people like to use the word bulletproof. It's not bulletproof, but it is child guard. I did have a...